I'm Ikben Fairtag, yeah. Ikben Fairtag. Yes, I'm ready.
All right, I'm going to call a meeting to order. Welcome to the June 17th Durango City Council meeting. We're happy to have you all here. Thank you for those of you joining us live on DGA. Just want to remind everybody that we do support the efforts of the Durango Community Relations Commission, and as a council, we have adopted the Civility First pledge program. This is a program that supports social harmony for all residents and visitors by treating everybody equally with equal, with respect and civility. And as a council, we operate under this pledge and we conduct our meetings accordingly. I want to remind everybody, it looks like most everyone, quite a few people have already signed up, but if you'd like to join us, we would love to hear from you today in public participation or in our public hearings, so please sign up if you can. And with that, Ms. Phillips, can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Councilor Baxter?
Here.
Councilor Bettine? Councilor Noseworthy? Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Here.
Mayor Youssef?
Here. Thank you. I wanted to see if I could call for a motion to call for a motion around amending the agenda to add Dato sooner than later. Let's not do it too early in the item, just in case, but I would suggest we move it to...
You mean in case they show up because they thought it was later?
Correct. So I would suggest that we add it perhaps...
After public hearings?
After public participation, maybe before public hearings?
Yes, yes.
Let's do that.
Yes.
So can I have a motion to that extent, please?
I'll make a motion to add the agenda item for the Dato to public, the area after public participation, which is number eight, so maybe this is number eight and a half.
Correct. Do I have a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. Okay, we have a new agenda item on our agenda now, which is based on the direction from our retreat and then followed up with a recent city council study session, which is an item that we have, we talk about any actual or perceived conflicts of interest of council. And do we, any councilors note of any actual or perceived conflicts of interest?
No.
None.
None, myself either. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to our proclamations tonight. We have one proclamation, and it is for Durango Pride Week. Ms. Phillips, will anyone be joining me today for Durango Pride Week?
Yes, ma'am, it's right there. I emailed them.
Okay, Ryan Garcia from Four Corners Alliance, would you like to join me at the podium while I read this? Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yeah, thanks. So this is Durango Pride Week for June 19 through the 23rd, 2019. Whereas Durango Pride is an opportunity for our entire town to celebrate and recognize the diversity of our community and to promote and advocate for the message of acceptance, civility, dignity, and respect for all people. And whereas the Durango community is a diverse public that includes people of all races, ethnicities, beliefs, national origins, ages, abilities, genders, and sexual orientations. And whereas our community strives for inclusiveness and acceptance of all of our people, and whereas we embrace and celebrate our individual identities and our commonalities, and I would encourage the Durango community to unite in solidarity and common purpose to celebrate the diversity, shared humanity, and civil rights of all people. Now therefore, I, Melissa Youssef, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim June 19 through the 23rd, 2019 as Durango Pride Week in Durango, Colorado. And with this, we have Ryan Garcia. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, yeah. So when it comes to pride, people oftentimes don't understand it. They see the extreme parts of pride where people are celebrating, partying nonstop. But when pride first started, it was a riot. It was the Stonewall riot specifically. When we lived in a society where people weren't even allowed to wear like different articles of clothing, you had to have three articles of clothing that matched your sex assignment at birth, or you're breaking the law. And it was at the Stonewall bar that the LGBTQ community, specifically trans women of color, actually started to fight back against these. And since then, it's continued to grow and morph and change. And I'm just very grateful that we have a community that supports LGBTQ individuals. We've come a really long way, but like as we look at LGBTQ suicide rates here in our local areas, as we look at different policies and different efforts across the nation where youth are being put through conversion therapy and like having really awful health outcomes, it's just so important that we continue to support diversity, to support that everyone in our community is welcome, that we are a community of love and acceptance, and that these youth deserve to have a long, healthy, happy life, just like everyone else.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm going to sign this, actually.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't realize I needed to do that. And thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
So June 19 through the 23rd?
Yep. It's going to be a great one.
Okay. One proclamation. Moving on to the review of the consent agenda. This is an area intended by the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a counselor removes an item from the consent agenda, and items that are removed from that consent agenda will be considered under item number seven. Ms. Phillips, can we please have a review of consent agenda items?
Items 5.1 through 5.3 are approval of minutes. 5.1, the minutes from the city council retreat of May 16th and 17th, 2019. 5.2, the study session of May 28th, 2019. 5.3, the regular meeting of June 4th, 2019. Items 5.4 and 5.5 are discussion and possible action items. 5.4 concerns acceptance of the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the City of Durango and the 2018 Financial Statements for the Durango La Plata County Airport. For 5.5, concerns resolution R 2019-27, changing the date of the July 2nd, 2019 Regular City Council Meeting to July 9th, 2019. Items 5.6 through 5.8 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of July 9th, 2019. 5.6 is to consider the Escalante Village Plan Development Amendment. 5.7 is to consider the minor subdivision preliminary plat for 875 East Fifth Street. 5.8 is to consider the Cedar Ridge Plan Development Amendment. And item 5.9 is final approval of ordinance O 2019-16, amending Chapter 23 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for purposes of implementing the half-cent increase in sales and use tax authorized for levy and collection through the passage of question 1A at the general election held April 2nd, 2019, setting forth limitations on the expenditures of funds received as a result of such increase in sales and use tax consistent with the requirements of said question 1A and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any counselor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda tonight?
Yes, I'd like to remove 5.4, the discussion and possible action concerning acceptance of the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the City of Durango and also the airport report.
Okay, and I'd like to remove items 5.5, please, which is the date of the meeting. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items withholding items 5.4 and 5.5?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, accepting 5.4 and 5.5.
I need a second.
Second, sorry.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brooke?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. We all have to be active participants tonight.
Well, I forgot we were three of us. I didn't want to hog the second.
So would you like to talk about 5.4, Councilor Baxter?
Well, I just wanted to know if there was anybody who was here tonight who wanted to make a comment about it, and I also did want to say that for my part, I think it's great that the Finance Department does such a good job producing financial statements and receives such good audit recommendations, but I am concerned that the amount of time that we had to review these, we receive them on Friday, and we needed to comment on them today, so I would like to suggest that that change in the future.
Totally noted. It was a lot of information to try to grasp in a weekend.
Yes.
And so you wanted to see if there was a community member that would like to speak?
Yeah, well, I don't know if they, were you signed up somewhere else, but since we took it off the agenda, okay.
I'd just like to comment that typically, the presentation is the entirety of our review. And, you know, these general, the auditors fly in to give the council specific instruction, and the audit is just that, it's the audit.
Oh, I understand, but I didn't have time to look over...
If there are findings, then we have a lot of discussion around findings, but in fact, there were no findings.
Right, but if I'd had more time, I might have had questions, so that was just my suggestion.
If possible?
Right.
To allow more time to huge reports?
Yes, it's 236 pages.
So what part of the agenda are we in now?
The consent agenda.
About CAFER.
About CAFER.
Does this be appropriate?
If we open the hearing?
Or should it be public?
Do we open the hearing?
I could do it in public here, if you're...
It's not a hearing, yeah. I think we're just, we just removed an item, and it seems like the appropriate place to
Typically, to remove it is for council discretion.
Yeah.
It's not...
Well, do you want, should we wait for public comment, then?
That is typical rule, yes.
Okay, Mr. Simpson, if you don't mind waiting for public comment, we would love to hear from you. And I will just go forward with item 5.5. I just wanted the community to be very well aware that we have moved the city council study, the meeting that was originally scheduled for July 2nd to July 9th. So there's no meeting on July 2nd. We'll have a study session and a city council meeting on July 9th, and I just wanted to take every opportunity I can to keep people aware of that. And so with that, not communication with the public, can I get a motion to approve that item, please?
I, actually, we need, I need to do a motion to approve both items.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve both 5.4 and 5.5 on the consent agenda.
Check.
Ms. Phillips, can I have a roll call?
Councilor Brooke?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes. And Ms. Phillips, can you, with Raptors Wild?
Yes, they're out here, I'll go ask them to come on through.
What, can you remind, what is their, they're at the fairgrounds now with birds?
They're at the, they're at the fairgrounds, and they wanted to come in with some of their birds and tell us a little bit about the opportunity.
And we were going to let them do that earlier before public participation because they have live birds, so bear with us for a moment while we bring the birds.
So, so anyone who has a bird phobia, please leave room.
Thank you for your patience. Are they going to come in? Okay.
Should we open both doors?
Wonderful. Come in, please join us if you could stand close to the podium so we can catch you on TV. We have Raptors Wild with us, they are at the fairgrounds, we have Mike Photo and Greg Rayborn. We look forward to hearing about what you're doing.
I just wanted to come in today, just kind of give you an idea of what we're doing and bringing a couple of our friends that are in our program. We're putting on a summertime wildlife education program at the fairgrounds at the rodeo arena. It's 11 o'clock and 2 o'clock every day, not every day, but most days. They can check our schedule on raptorswild.org. And what we do is we present a wildlife education program to the public using falcons, hawks, eagles, and owls. These are a couple of our birds in the show. This is Comet. Comet is a 19-year-old white Arctic deer falcon, and I got him when he was about big enough to sit in the palm of my hand 19 years ago. He's now retired, and he's like a, probably a 95-year-old man. They lived 12, 13 years in the wild, so he's already far exceeded that time, and he's probably got a few more years in captivity.
This is Copper. She's a female aplamato falcon. She's about seven weeks old, so she's just a youngster, and we're just in the process of training her, so hopefully she will be in the show soon, too.
Now this bird, if you come to the show and you're lucky enough to see these guys, this bird is actually a very, she's an endangered species, she's a very highly endangered species, and so people that get to see her, they're very lucky because there's very few of these birds in the United States in the wild.
So again, this program is daily?
Well, it's not daily. We leased out the fairgrounds every day they had available, so we're there most Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays for sure.
Okay.
Some, some of the other days, but you just have to check our website, and it'll tell you which days we're there and which days we're not.
And they could go to raptorswild.com?
Dot org.
Dot org. Raptors Wild.
Wednesdays are the rodeos, so we're never there on Wednesdays.
Never there on Wednesdays.
Right.
So Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays likely.
Usually Sundays, but I think this week we're not in, we're not...
And you said that maybe 11 o'clock and 2 o'clock?
Right.
And it's an opportunity to engage with the birds?
Yep, we do a very up close and personal program, we're right in the grandstands right with you. Some of our birds are, we have one Eurasian eagle owl that is about eight weeks old, she has about six and a half foot wingspan, and she'll stand, she'll hop down on the bench right next to you. So if you're wearing sandals, your toes look real similar to a little bitty mouse. Be very careful.
Right, okay. And, and all ages are welcome?
All ages, everybody is welcome. We do, we have a program that's designed, everyone from the littlest kids up to senior citizens level is...
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for sharing your program with us live.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. That's tough to beat. Who else has birds?
Yeah.
See you guys.
Okay.
That's wonderful.
That was really wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Lang. We're going to now move into public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to write comments or ask questions on areas that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. When I call you forward, if you please join us at the podium, speak your name and address clearly for the record. We are limiting comments to three minutes, and at two and a half minutes, our city manager will kindly warn you that your time is nearing an end. We don't mean to be distracting, but we are trying to run efficient meetings. That said, we very much care about what you have to say, and so we will be actively listening to your comments. We don't normally respond to the dais, but if we have, from the dais, but if we have time at the end, there may be some comments. And with that, I would like to please ask, I hope I say this correctly, Mike Photo?
He was just here with the bird.
Okay, good. And then that was Greg as well.
Hi, folks. My name is Rick Cobb, and I live in the Three Springs neighborhood, so I am typically advocating for things to be located in our neighborhood, which is one of the fastest-growing, if not fastest-growing, part of Durango. And part of that drives me to attend a lot of parks and recreation meetings to see what assets in that area are, you know, in our neighborhood or to be slated to be developed there. And that neighborhood was incorporated into the city around 2005. To date, the only asset I'm aware of is Confluence Park, which was actually built by the developers, but maintained by the city. There are some Trails 2000 trails out there, which is indirectly supported. Last week, at the Parks and Rec meeting, we got to see, and to my understanding, this is the first time it's been published, a 20-year plan, which looks at forecasts for both overall revenue for the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the capital projects that they're evaluating and ranking. So really interesting, it's great to see that, but it does raise a lot of questions. For example, the community park in Three Springs, which is land that's been earmarked to be donated to the city, is slated to be worked on in 2034. So that would be 30 years after this neighborhood was incorporated. So that means 30 years of paying sales tax and property tax with not very much to show for it, all right? Another would be Smart 160 Trail East. Part of what I've been lobbying for is breaking that project apart into smaller pieces, including, how about just a natural surface trail, which is about $5,000 to $12,000 per mile? Mile and a half, figure that's in the 20, 25,000. That's slated for 2027, and the first phase of that is 2.1 million, so I don't think that's a natural surface trail, it's probably concrete. So just trying to understand this budget and be able to influence, you know, moving things more quickly for our neighborhood, which at full buildout is going to be over 20% of the city population. So this is my T-shirt, I've been editing it, so I'll be printing a new version now that I've gotten revisions from a few city councils. But basically, everything on here is things that we can potentially locate in Three Springs.
Pickleball, gymnastics, school, firehouse, okay? Community park? Okay, thank you.
Smart 160 Trail.
Smart 160.
Well, and there's some checkpoints here lately, just finished, we're on Swerline, Genoa, away from Watertown, close to...
Great.
But Smart 160 East, definitely, just looking for that, community park.
Yes. Well, that's one way to make your, you know, get the feet, you need to get it out.
I'm concerned if you wash your T-shirt, we're in trouble. If you make, you're now documented.
The other, the other aspect to this, and this is downloadable on the city website, this thing, is I'm also going to look at the correlation between, you know, how these things are laid out over time and priority, and matching those up with the public surveys that are available, the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Board, the final recommendations with things to make in the final plan, because they don't seem to sync up that well. So what's the discrepancy? Why are we seeing surveys different from recommendations, different from actual plans? So I'll report that next time.
Thank you, Rick. We look forward to it.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All right, Amanda Erickson?
We're all together.
Oh, we're all together, okay. All three, a three-in-one, okay. It's the gaggle.
Thank you, councilors, for your time today. We just wanted to come here and introduce ourselves to you. My name is Amanda Erickson, I'm with the Durango Area Association of Realtors. I represent approximately 450 Realtor members and related industry businesses in my organization. This is Brittany, she's with the Home Builders Association. Jack with the Chamber of Commerce, and we also have Christie with the Energy Council. We formed the Legislative Advocacy Coalition, which Joan also represents with us, and I'm sure you've seen her face several times in these meetings, she takes notes for us and makes sure that we stay, we keep with the pulse of what's going on with the city. But we just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves to you, to let you know that we are a resource to you and our industries, and that we're also trying to make sure that we are very aware of what's going on with you, and that we can be of assistance when, when we're available, so.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, real quick, again, I'm Brittany Bogentaller, I'm the new executive officer with the Home Builders Association, and I know that a lot of people know about the Home Builders Association, but I wanted to highlight just a couple of things that we've been working on and hope to work on. So we serve 170 businesses in our community, 53 of those are in the builder, architect, developer, and 117 in those auxiliary associate phases that help support the building industry like lighting or retail, excavation. We have a flagship program currently that we've been working the last few years on, which is trades and training, and it's actually at the Durango High School, where we fund certification classes and provide materials, volunteer opportunities, mentorship, and then at the end of this build, which is currently a tiny home, we will assist Durango High School in the sale of that home to then go back into the same fund. So now we have our flagship opportunity funding itself, so we are moving on to new opportunities. Our next initiative that we hope to really get involved in is, is basically the housing issues within Durango. So we're at the beginning of really assessing out where Home Builders Association can put our unique expertise and experience into play within the, within our community. Some of those are just kind of ideas on partnering private funds with public funds, others are infrastructure, but we're just at the beginning of that new phase, hopefully over the next six to nine months developing that. So we really look forward to any opportunities to get involved and to work with you all in the future, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
I was just going to say, the common interest that brings these four groups together, obviously, is private property rights, and that's what our primary concern is and brings us to you today.
Go ahead, Jack.
Now it's safe? Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Jack Lovell, Executive Director, Durango Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce has 800 members, which approximately represents 15,000 employees. Our mainly focused with business-to-business connectivity, as well as consumer-to-business, and encouraging commerce within Durango and La Plata County. Our programs include Leadership La Plata, Young Professionals of Durango, we have the Look Local First campaign, as well as our diplomats. We really appreciate the city working with us with our new building, up at 2301 Main, right across from the high school. If you haven't been in, come check it out, everybody. Also, Chamber works closely with the Economic Alliance, the Business Improvement District, Dato Tourism Office, Visit Durango, and Local First, and just want you to know that we meet quarterly to talk about all the different projects that we're working on, and we keep each other informed of what we're doing. One thing I would like to say, too, is consider the Chamber as a resource through all of our marketing avenues, as well as other things we can offer the city. Again, think of us as a resource, and I really want to thank you for, Pauline O'Brien, for putting on the redevelopment symposium. I think there's a lot of great opportunities, especially for North Main, and looking at urban renewal authorities and the chambers behind that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you restate the legislative entity that you created?
The Legislative Advocacy Coalition.
Legislative Advocacy Coalition.
That's what you're calling yourself.
That's what we call ourselves.
Legislative?
LAC. LAC, yes. We have an acronym.
Coalition. Thank you very much. Any other questions, council? Thank you. Mr. Mohler, David Mohler. State your name and address, please.
David Mohler, 72, wait, that's my business, 72 Tressalane, Durango, Colorado. I'm here on behalf to just give you guys a quick three-minute executive summary of commercial rafting use in Colorado and a little bit on Durango. So I'll read for you an executive summary that was put together by the Colorado River Outfitters Association in partnership with the Colorado Tourism Board. Rafting use in the state of Colorado continues to be relatively stable since the big growth years in the 1980s. 2018 commercial rafters used the fourth busiest in history with a total rafter use of 520,217 user days in the state of Colorado. Commercial use in 2018 was down 9.6%, or 55,000 user days compared to the previous year. The overall economic impact to the state of Colorado is $176 million, which is the third highest economic impact in history. The drop in rafting use in 2018 was primarily due to the drop in conditions resulting in low flows. Many rivers ended their season early as the flows continued not to support local rafting. We were one of those, we ended our season August 20th, and in years past, we can go in through September. Rivers like, in southwest Colorado, were particularly hit hard like the Piedra, San Miguel, and the San Juan. The animus wasn't directly called out in this particular report because we did still see some pretty decent user days. So go through a quick little timeline. In 2000, we have data going back to 1991. In 2000, we have data going back to 1988, we report our user days to the city, the city forwards them on to the Colorado River Outfitters Association. 2001, we saw 42,000 commercial rafters on the Animas River. 2002, during the Missionary Ridge Fire, we saw 12,000. Go through a quick fast-forward by 2005, which is our epic year, 52,700 commercial rafters. That year in Maine, we saw 8,500 cubic feet per second go down the river. So, I haven't seen those flows technically since, but for a brief moment, 2007, around September 15th, we saw late rainstorm and saw this river spike up to 8,500 again. So, what's been happening in the state, and particularly in our area? Since 2012, 38,000, 2013, 33,000, 2014, 37,000, 34, 35, 36, and then last year we had 28,000. Fast-forward, or I should say, go to our direct competitor on the front range, the Arkansas, in those similar years, 169,000, 179,000, 191,000, 196,000, 223,000. So while we started to see a decline down the Animas, they started to see an increase. So why is that? Why is our direct competitor, sort of speaking our industry, the Arkansas River, the front range, getting our business? And of course, some of that has to do with, you know, they got a lot, they got 170 different rafting companies down the Arkansas. There's a big interest, but they get it. I'll tell you what they get over there is the economic impact, and also through marketing. I can't say it enough, through marketing. So what does that mean for us? Well, we save about $132 is our direct expenditure for every single rafter that goes rafting down the Animas River. Thank you, 30 seconds. So what does that mean? That means, right now, in Durango, as of last year, the direct expenditure was $3,779,952. That was with 28,000. Our goal as a community should be to reach those 2,005 numbers that we did 15, 16 years ago. If we were to hit 55,000 rafters this year down the Animas River, the overall direct impact would be an additional $3.5 million, an economic impact within the community using a 2.56 multiplier, meaning that's how many times it's going to circulate within the community. We have an opportunity to see between $9 and $12 million. So what I ask for is to just continue to promote the Animas, double down on the Animas. It's in great health, we're putting in below the rapids, we're putting down, we're taking down a tribal land, we have private property access near state line. It's an amazing trip, and the economic impact would be fantastic for this community to see a huge rebound after last year's drought.
Excellent. If you wouldn't mind sharing your talking points with us, maybe we can help.
Yeah.
Please do that.
Those are some amazing numbers.
I'll send this to you guys.
Yes.
I'm reminded that after the river turned orange, that CNN declared Durango closed for the season, and, you know, when the governor came, we had the opportunity to say, Durango's definitely not closed for the season. And, because we have a multitude of other things, but in this case, you guys are doing an incredible job of utilizing a healthy flow and maintaining that particularly great industry. So thanks for doing that, and we are open for business.
And it just so happens you have a room of marketing professionals behind you.
Yes, we do. So, update on economic impact study, you'll probably hear more of that come from my recommendations, some of this data is a little outdated, but thank you, city manager, councilors, Madam Mayor, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. John Simpson, please.
Mayor Yousaf, my name is John Simpson, I'm at 1831 Crespe Drive. I'm here tonight to comment on the recent approval of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and its relationship to the development of the 2020 budget, which is already under work by city staff. Now is the time for council to decide if the policies of the past should be carried on into the future. Shown on this screen is 1A from the 2018 CAFR. I'm using the water fund as an example, but this problem I'm going to talk about exists in the Parks and Rec Fund and the general fund as well. And it's important we address this now with the passage of 1A, so that we're starting off on the right foot. In 2017, council approved 2018 budget of $6 million for the non-departmental cost, which I have highlighted in the yellow one there. The majority of this is for capital improvements. There was no action taken by council after the original budget, but as you can see, the final budget went up to $15.7 million. The $9.7 million increase represents capital projects that were approved over the last several years. Most of these were approved before most of you guys were even on council. We understand budgets are designed to set a limit that the actual, that the staff can spend in the next year. We understand circumstances changes, and there could be a need to approve supplemental appropriations, and the final budget will be different from the original budget. But that's not the case for modifying the budget here. You can see the actual amount spent in 2019 was only $1.9 million. Citizens expect council to establish a system that holds staff accountable. This current process lacks that accountability. Priorities change from year to year, and something approved five years ago has less importance now, and likely the cost has risen. Currently, staff is allowed to spend this $15.7 million of the water fund without council oversight. If one project goes over budget, staff can avoid disclosure to council by simply eliminating another project or another previously approved project. Two examples of other previously approved projects are the meter replacement program, originally approved at 1.3 and modified to 2.8, in the Santerita Utilities Admin Building, which went up from 4.1 to 4.4 million. The management of capital projects is also needed, because it appears the first draft of the water rate study suggests the existing fund balance can be spent on the Ridges Basin Water Treatment Plant, rather than previously appropriated projects. Council must give direction to staff if the use of money previously approved is appropriate for future infrastructure. My suggestion to fix this project problem is council needs to adopt a zero-based budget policy. Only projects expected to be completed or partially completed in 2020 should be budgeted for 2020. Councils should make it clear that it knows it may have to amend the 2020 budget for unforeseeable problems, that's normal. If a project isn't completed in 2020, the 2021 budget can be amended by council to account for the carryover of money if needed to complete the project. If we do this, it creates the expectation that each approved project in 2020 will be completed on time and on budget. Mayor Yousaf?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Okay, that's our, that's all we have for public participation tonight. So we're going to move on to our Dato agenda item that we added and we switched to earlier in the, in the agenda, so I'm glad you all are here. Are we ready to have a discussion with that, councilors? Okay. I believe that we had some very good feedback, we had an excellent presentation from the Dato professionals and board members, and they brought us up to speed on all of their efforts, renewed efforts to provide services for the city of Durango, both through their marketing efforts and through their welcome center. We also had further discussion about that today, and we wanted to take some formal action in a meeting setting.
So, Mayor Yousaf, normally we wouldn't need to vote on this, this doesn't require any specific action, but I think it's incumbent on council to kind of formalize our position on this issue, because it became an item that we, we heard during the listing session after the defeat of 2A, that we might consider putting the Dato contract out to, out to bid or out for an RFP, to look at new options. And that was after the defeat of 2A. Subsequently, and culminating in last Tuesday's study session, we had a tremendous presentation by Dato and a number of other community groups, all talking about the new options, new techniques, new, new life in our, in our tourism marketing efforts. So I would like to make a motion that the city council agreed not to pursue a request for proposal, RFP, for marketing services at this time. City council should direct staff to extend the contract with Dato for marketing services and for the welcome center for the remainder of 2019, and further directs the city staff to include aforementioned contracts with Dato as part of the 2020 and 2021 recommended budget.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
I think it's great.
I think it's great, too. May we have a roll call, please?
Well, wait, we haven't voted yet. We haven't voted yet.
May we have a roll call, please? Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf? Yes, now we can cheer. Thank you, guys, for all of your efforts, again, we really appreciate it. All right, with that, we're going to move on to legislative and public policy-related hearings. Thought I'd give you a moment. I'll go ahead and talk just about these hearings while they're exiting. I'll go ahead and wait.
I feel like I'm on a sports team here.
I know. Mail. Moving on to public hearings, we have one legislative and policy-related hearing tonight, item 9.1.1. It's a continued public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the Storm Drainage Design Criteria Manual. The issues that we deal with in this section of the agenda are legislative or policy-related matters. These public hearings are an opportunity for citizens to provide formal input into the city council's decision-making process, and the format of the hearing is intentionally organized for transparency and fairness. And with that, I want to just also suggest we welcome all public testimony, so long as it's related to the issue at hand, and with that, we're going to start with a presentation from city staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow councilors. I'm Jenny Nikovich, I'm a civil engineer too with the Community Development Department. I'm here tonight with Assistant City Engineer Keith Doherty. I'll be talking about our Storm Drainage Design Criteria Manual amendments. So just real quick, I'm going to run through an outline for my presentation this evening. I'm going to do a quick high-level overview of our city's stormwater program, and how it relates to our master, uh, stormwater plan. Next, I'll go through the background of our master plan, discuss our proposed text amendments, and end with a recommended action for tonight's public hearing. Durango is required to have a stormwater program according to the requirements with the Federal Clean Water Act and the Colorado Water Quality Control Act. We are designated as a Phase II MS4, which means we have a pipe system which collects and discharges stormwater runoff to the Animas River. The water quality requirements for that discharge are described and outlined in what's called an MS4 permit issued to the city by the state of Colorado. As part of our MS4 compliance, we have six required program elements. I'm not going to discuss all six of them tonight, but our stormwater master plan helps with ongoing compliance for post-construction site management. This would be design and construction of permanent water quality features, like a rain garden or a detention pond, to improve water quality to the Animas River. Next, I'll move into our stormwater master plan. We started a CIP in 2016 to update this plan, which was last completed in 1982. We split the project up into three phases, the first being a Storm Drainage Design Criteria Manual, which outlines guidelines and requirements for the design of drainage infrastructure in the city. We are currently working on Phase II to update basin hydrology and analyze flows around and through our city. We hope to be done with this phase sometime this fall. And our third and final phase, which we're hoping to start in 2020, will be to take our information from both Phase I and Phase II to help us identify potential substandard drainage infrastructure and identify funding sources to take care of these needs. You may remember, Keith and I were here last fall to adopt Phase I of our master plan. The manual includes 11 chapters. Our proposed text amendments are within four of those chapters. Some of our edits are to improve some formatting and take care of some typos, but we do have a policy-based amendment that should clarify the original intent from when we started working on the manual, and potentially make it simpler for smaller development projects and infill sites. Our design requirements are split up into three main categories. First, there's projects greater than or equal to one acre. These requirements are largely driven by the MS4 permit I mentioned earlier. We also have projects less than one acre, and projects in sensitive areas or with known flooding issues. Since the adoption of the manual, our projects in the less-than-one-acre category have been the most complicated to implement, and so most of our policy amendments in the text amendments relate to this category. Our current language in the manual for less-than-one-acre projects states engineering design is required for all these sites regardless of development type. During the development of the manual, staff sort of envisioned providing a variety of options for developers to use to incorporate water quality into their developments. I think a good example of this is the North Main Corridor. We have a lot of parcels that are less than one acre, and not much existing water quality infrastructure in place. We didn't want the entire North Main district to redevelop without incorporating some water quality in that area. We didn't mean for the requirements to blanket over all sites. This could really complicate small development projects, like an interior remodel or just a simple patio addition. So we've worked with planning staff to develop some subcategories within our less-than-one-acre category, and we'd like to propose new language, which states that all development projects in the city should implement our design guidelines that are in our manual. However, engineering design would only be required for sites less than one acre, for residential subdivisions, multifamily projects, and non-residential developments. With that, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to help if I can, but I would request that you approve our proposed text amendments and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending our drainage criteria, and schedule a first reading of the ordinance for our next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we can ask questions, can I see if we have any, do we have any public testimony?
Uh, sorry.
Doesn't look like.
No public testimony. Okay, then while you're up there, do we have any questions, councilors? First, before I do that, just I will officially open and close the public testimony. And with that, do we have any questions from council?
I think this is a good, good action, you know, it was probably a little bit of overreach on the front end, and we're backing off and, as things get tweaked, we understand what the ramifications are, and there's a number of ramifications where we don't need to have a fully engineered plan. It is a good concept, however, I mean, and this has been, one of the things that's been overlooked and considered the evolution of Boto Park, we didn't really have a great master drainage plan, and we're paying for it today, or the property owners out there are paying for it today. And so I encourage the, the concept of stormwater, drainage and master plans, it's just that we don't need it for every, every project less than one acre, and I think we all agree with that.
Yes. And in your, in your plan of, your timeline that you laid out, again, just to be clear, around the master planning for the stormwater drains, did you say you were expecting that to be done when, in 2020?
Phase II, we should be finished up with this fall, and then we hope to start Phase III in 2020.
In 2020, and complete that in 2020, you think?
Yeah, hopefully.
So then we will have a plan for stormwater drains for the community at that time?
Yeah, that would complete the entire master plan.
And this is all part of that?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Any further questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve, I guess, for 9.1.1?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed text amendments and direct the city attorney to prepare, prepare an ordinance amending the Storm Drainage Design Criteria for the first meeting at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'm excited to second that motion.
I'm excited to second that motion.
May we have a roll call, please? Mayor Pro Tim Brokey?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf? Yes, please, yes. Okay, moving on to 9.2.1, one quasi-judicial public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing to consider the Purple Cliffs at Escalante Plan Development Amendment. These quasi-judicial hearings require a legal process in which facts and opinions are presented to the city council who serve as unbiased decision-makers. During these hearings, the city council sits as collective judge of issues, not as a legislative body. The applicant has the burden of proof in these proceedings and the city council follows these hearings that therefore is somewhat different. We welcome all public testimony as well in these public hearings, request them that they be relevant to the issue at hand. I would like, here we have Nicole to give us a presentation of the facts.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Nicole Killian, Assistant Director for Community Development Department. I'm actually covering for Craig Roser tonight as he's not here today. And he's been the planner on the Purple Cliffs project and the applicant is present as well. Just to orient you, because I know some of you probably were not part of the process when Purple Cliffs came through. So Purple Cliffs is located in the Escalante Plan Development. This is Home Depot. This is River Road and then River Oaks and this is Escalante, which now continues all the way to Dominguez near Walmart. So this is the property that's in front of you tonight. November 16, the BOA did approve height variance for this property from 35 feet to 43 feet after they heard from the Escalante Crossings Architectural Review Committee, which is a committee that's in that PD. They have to give their approval first before the city will act on a request. And so that did happen in '16. In '17, this was in front of both Planning Commission and City Council. It is a PD, so it's preliminary plan approval, April of '17. And the approval was for a three-story building above a basement that has parking. There's approximately 13,700 square feet of commercial uses on the first floor, 10,500 square feet of office space on the second floor, and five residential units with a multipurpose room on the third floor. And then June of '17 is when they received their building permit for the exterior. They'll come in with tenant improvement finishes for the interior as spaces get leased out. So this is just a real quick site plan. The building is located on this corner and there is surface parking. The access, this is River Oaks Drive, the access to the underground or the basement parking is off of River Oaks Drive. And just some of the elevations that came through the process for the building. So for tonight, they're asking to do two things. Number one is they want to relocate that multipurpose room that was on the third floor to the second floor and that will reduce their amount of office space on that second floor. And the second item is they want to add a sixth residential unit on that third floor. And so this just shows, this is the second floor, so that's going to be the new location of the multipurpose room. And then this is the third floor, this will be the new location of the residential unit. So because it's a PD, this is a major change that had to come before Planning Commission, City Council. And then their next phase would be to complete the construction and then if they want to go ahead and sell the units off individually, they would do an ads-bill plat with staff to finalize creating different units for sale. And then also at that time, they would have to enter into a fair share agreement with the city because these six units would be for sale units and anything over three has to have a fair share agreement. So they're not there yet. They haven't condo them and are selling them off yet. But that would be the next steps. So this request does meet the LUC criteria for PD amendments and is a recommendation of the Planning Commission that the city council approved by motion, the Purple Cliffs Escalante Plan Development Amendment, subject to the findings and conditions as reflected in the Planning Commission's staff report of June 3. Those conditions are to modify the fair share requirements in the PD agreement to reflect this new approval of six units. They would have to pay in lieu school and park fees for this additional unit and all written in verbal and graphic representations by the applicants and representatives deemed conditions of approval.
Excellent. Is that it? I'm going to officially open the public hearing and do we have, would the applicant or developer like to present the case?
Thank you, Mayor Yousaf. I'm Karen Zhang. My address is 259 County Road 216, Durango, Colorado. And the reason we're wanting to change the location of the meeting room is that we initially had two elevators in the building, but due to cost, we had to decrease to one elevator. So if we left the meeting room on the third floor, the public would be walking through the residential area in order to get to the meeting room. So it seemed logical to go for another residential unit and place the meeting room on the second floor. So, thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any public testimony today?
There is none.
Okay. Okay, then I will, I will close the public testimony then. Do we have questions by council?
I just want to thank you for mentioning the fair share agreements and the in lieu school and park fees. That was going to be my question, so great.
I think it's, you know, this seems like a pretty basic internal review and it's, for the record, it doesn't change the exterior or visual aspects, any visual aspects of this facility. So there's no additional impact from that standpoint. Parking, it seems like is, if we trade, the parking that was associated, associated previously with the office space that I understand now is being replaced by the, by the community room, that if it's two spaces for that additional unit, that's probably about on a par with that justified by the occupancy that's being deleted. So that seems like a pretty much a swap and otherwise it's just an internal floor plan adjustment for causes stated and it seems pretty reasonable.
Great. And my only question then, kind of following up on that, given the reasonable nature of the request seemingly reasonable, what does constitute a major change in a PD?
So in a PD, a major change could be something major on the site plan, like they add another building or they take away a building, a change of use, which is what we consider this to be, they're adding another unit that was not originally intended. So those are probably the two main ones that you would see mostly for a major PD. And another, like uses, we've brought marijuana to you, we've brought vacation rentals because when a PD's written, we have an agreement, if they don't spell out specific uses, then technically they're not allowed unless they come through and get amendments. So those are examples of other uses that have come through previously.
Excellent. Any further information from city staff or from the applicant? All right, then, I will, I'm closing the public hearing and I look for a discussion and motion from council.
Well, the last thing I'll say is it's another unit in Durango, Colorado, another residential unit. So in the words of Sweetie Marbury, former city councilor, that's our victory. So thanks to the developer for that. I'd like to advance a motion to approve Purple Cliffs at Escalante Plan Development Amendment, subject to the findings and conditions as reflected in the Planning Commission's staff report of June 3, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a roll call, please? Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brokey?
Yes.
Mayor Yousaf? Yes. Great. Thank you. Moving on now to council reports and actions. Yes, we're skipping down to council reports and actions. Councilors, do we have any updates you'd like to share? And I encourage you to present any updates on any of your council liaison positions that you might be associated with, if you have any updates for us.
Sure. So the Utilities Commission has been given a draft form of the rate study, which is exciting. And that includes the activities that go on in the water fund and the sewer fund. And that's not all I have to say. We're moving forward on looking at that, which it includes the funding for the ridges basin water treatment plant. And I don't know when we're going to get the final draft study, but there were some things that they wanted to add into it to make some changes.
Excellent. Thank you.
We had a really good breakfast meeting with the Utilities Commission, two members of it.
Oh, we sure did.
And that was one of our more productive and innovative sessions at breakfast.
It was. It was fun.
For those of us that got up early.
Yeah, exactly. And I will say that I'm, yeah, no poke at that. The people that are of our community who've agreed to serve on the Utilities Commission are great. They're all very experienced, very educated, very dedicated, and just spend a lot of time thinking about it. And I really appreciate that.
Thank you for your service as the liaison.
Yeah, I'm enjoying it.
Excellent.
Well, similarly, I'm a liaison to the Library Board and, which is a joint city and county function. And they presented a annual report last Tuesday at a study session and it was a pretty thorough and well-written report and, which identified their list of tasks, anticipating that we will be talking about them during the upcoming budget sessions, of course, and, but want to thank them for their dedication and, and the thoroughness of that document. The really fun thing I have to talk about is the 10th Annual Clean Commute Week. So this is how we roll in Durango, Colorado. And, you know, I came on council seven years ago and remember, I think I've got a different colored t-shirt for every, every one of those years, but I'm looking forward to this year's issue. But it's a, it's a week-long event. And so it starts on June 22 at Farmer's Market, which is, most of us know where the Farmer's Market is, at the old First National, TBK Bank now, First National Bank, in the parking lot and you can get free bicycle tune-ups and prizes. And then the following Monday, there's a community forum. That sounds a little dull, but at that community forum, which happens to be at Carver's Brewery, there is a discussion on multimodal aspects of our community, as well as a commuter fashion show hosted by Animas Trading Company and the food will be sponsored by Stone Age Tools. So get some free food and watch a fashion show, commuter fashion show on Monday. Tuesday is the Pedal Versus Metal and that's a longstanding competition between bicyclists and people in cars. And that is a competition, I know former Mayor White was always running, racing his Prius to beat somebody on a bicycle and he always beat me. I know that for sure. That happens on Tuesday. The Bike to Work Day, which is kind of the apex of this, of the week, Bike to Work Day is on Wednesday and that's held at two locations, one in town at Hermosa Roasters here on Main Avenue, and secondly, at Mercy Regional Coffee out in Three Springs. And there's snacks, prizes, and music to wake up to in the morning on your morning commute. Then on Thursday, we, we wrap it up with a bike parade to Ska culminating in Love Your Commute, which is a celebration at Ska Brewery with awards, ceremony, music, and prizes. And it's always a great time and, and a couple of beers involved after you've worked off all that energy. So hopefully, this will be all posted on our website as well as in the paper. Hopefully, we get a lot of participation because this is a really, this is the DNA of our community is how we get to and from work. And I can't think of any, too many other communities where per capita that actually have this much participation in riding bicycles to work. So thanks for the multimodal staff for putting this together. It'll be awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. E-bikes, okay?
E-bikes are legal in Durango, Colorado, most places. Not on soft trails.
Right.
Don't even try.
Okay. I promise I won't. I think, a couple of updates. I'm the liaison for the Creative Economy Commission. We are in the process of designing new logos, which is fun for our creative economy. So that's some, that was my first meeting that I attended. And on the alliance, Barbara Noseworthy is getting prepared to get more actively involved in that, but we are heavily involved in the new EV search and we're making really good progress in that area. And we are getting some very good staff in place to help us through the transition. So good progress with the alliance. I wanted to remind the community that we will have no meeting on June 25 or July 2. So our next city council meeting will be on July 9 and then we'll have a double, double header. But we will not be in a meeting session for the next two weeks. We are also, as a council, just so everyone knows, heading to the Colorado Municipal League Conference. We leave tomorrow and we will be gone for the rest of the week, council and staff. So looking forward to that and connecting with other municipalities on what's working and, and what, what isn't working in various communities. It's a nice time to connect with, with people and municipalities.